Jeff, do you want to pick up the meeting and kind of explain the rules? And then we'll let Mary kind of guide the walking through the regulations. And then we can also pull the regulations up on the screen for anyone who's on the screen. So they can see what we're going through.
Certainly. Good afternoon, everybody. Make sure it's actually afternoon there. My name is Jeff Craig, and playing Development Services Director. And welcome to the meeting to discuss the commercial solar array text amendment. The Planning Commission will not be taking public comment today. They'll be there to discuss and revise the items on the amendment itself. This will be coming back to the Planning Commission for consideration at a future meeting. So please reach out to planning and development staff if you'd like to know the agendas and times for that. But there'll be a chance for public comment, both at the Planning Commission meeting and if it continues on to the Board of County Commissioners. So with that, I will turn it over to Tanya and Mary, and they will kind of get us rolling through the item today.
Thank you. As this is a committee item, I think it's going to be kind of loosely organized. So do you want to go behind the line and discuss the various provisions? Kim, or did you want to talk?
I was just thinking, since we have public here, if we just kind of go through how you're thinking about updating it at the moment. I mean, any changes since the last Planning Commission meeting? And maybe just talk about the main areas without going into great detail right now.
Sure. Well, we made a table of notes from the last Planning Commission meeting of items that we should look at. And one was why would Douglas County be a good place for a solar facility? That's one of the questions that was raised. So that's something we will do some research on. We had one about herbicide use, and it appears that townships and counties are not able to regulate pesticides. So the county extension office gave us the state law, which we then sent to the county councilor. But the neighbors can request it, the county commission can add it for condition. It just can't be in the standards. So we probably won't add standards to that. Oh, and there's one, Jim, in my memory, that are the holders of the bond. What if they would move on? What happens in that case? For instance, they go bankrupt. And so the Douglas County clerk's office had some information. They said that's never happened. They began talking to the county counselor, and they said that that is up. It's like insurance. It's covered under FDIC. So someone would take it over. It wouldn't just be forfeit if the firms. So we'll include that information when we go back to the commission. And so a lot of the information, LISA evaluation is something that the Planning Commission mentioned. They'd like to see added. Oh, that's nice. Thank you. That'd be like easier. And one comment was looking at the estimates for reclamation costs. You know, are they actual, what it actually costs? So one thing we're going to try to research is have there been any facilities that have been reclaimed? And if so, you know, what was their cost? And we're trying to look at similar facilities, what we're working on our standards for. Probably a principal issue that we'll look at is the 1,000 acre cap. Some of the commissioners asked us to provide some reasoning for that cap. Is it needed to be increased? So I think that was something the committee is going to discuss and look into. And reclamation, the commission suggested we make that more clear, what it's going to be reclaiming for. That if it's agricultural land for its use for solar farm, that it would be reclaiming for agricultural use. And so we're going to beef up that wording. And if you can just scroll down to number seven, the LISA evaluation. That was a comment that was made with this text amendment, and then also was made in when we discussed our LISA system. Is that if it's a CUP that involves a large area of land, maybe you should look at the LISA too. Kind of gives us a better evaluation of the quality of land that we're looking at. And so we'll probably make a change to note that that, even though the LISA, there's a tax amendment going right along with this. It may be changed in that tax amendment, but just in case one gets done before the other, we'll probably include that language in that. One question was how much agriculture do we need for tech? And I don't know if that's not something I think the committee can determine. We can at least provide some input on that. And benefits, what are the benefits from a solar facility? And so some of them listed here are the ones that the firm mentioned. So we're looking into that, like we look at what are the possible negative impacts? So we're going to look at what would be the possible positive impacts? So we can provide both. And that's just general information. It's not something that would be included in the text amendment. And 10 is about long-term benefits to soil health. We want to make sure that if we're going to use the land for agricultural use afterwards, and we are recommending regular testing, just to make sure that the soil is in good quality as it was when it started. And there was some additional tests recommended, soil organic matter and soil carbon. And so we contacted the county extension office for their information, some direction. And they put us in touch with someone at K-State who hasn't given us any information yet. But I think they will give us hopefully some resources we can look at. So that's something that will be changed. There'll be more information on that. And someone asked, is security fencing necessary? Could you have more wildlife-friendly fencing? And that's something we can look into as we review other areas that have solar facilities. Do they all have security fencing? Is there something that makes them need to securely fence it? I don't know about the panels. If they have something that would be, people may want to vandalize. We'll check into that. And again, number 12 is kind of another information about beefing up the final results of the reclamation plan. So that it's clear that it's going to be returned to a useful, non-hazardous state. And then, of course, if it was agriculture before, it would be suitable for agriculture after. And perhaps even better suited if it could happen. There was a request to leave cable in the ground if it's buried more than 36 inches. So that's something we were going to look into. What would be the impact? What would be the concerns? And we'll provide information and recommendation when that returns. And this will be returning in September, so we have a lot of work for us to do. Should be restrict on soil passes one and two. These are noted as high-quality soils in the comprehensive plan. And so we might look at that, and perhaps a restriction on grading might be necessary. The applicant suggested about battery storage, having to comply with these standards. And they provided a link to those standards. And I'm not opposed to including that, but I think our specific standards that we would look at should be included. Just it's hard to pull up a whole document if you want to do enforcement. So some of the more important factors in that, in those standards, I think we would look still deep. But I think the committee would look at that and make a decision on that. Okay. And the applicant wanted us to clarify that with the application, preliminary studies are fine, but more complete studies would be required. And that's how we usually operate, but I think the committee will work on some language to make that clear that before you get your final approval from the county commission, we have to have complete plans that have been approved. But you know, you can do something more preliminary as the use is getting general approval. And the last question, climate change mitigation and how it relates to our sustainability portfolio. I think we'll have to discuss that and see what our responses to that would be. So is that the end of that, Jeff? Yeah. So that's basically what the committee is going to look at. We're also going to go through the regulations and just kind of clean them up where they're unclear. But these are the principal changes that the commission asked for. Unless any of the committee members want to add anything?
All right, now, it might be helpful if we go through the proposed regulations this time. I guess their main numbers and what's included in there just a little bit, just to... So, and where we have some definitions, just to make sure everybody's on the same page with what they mean. Just for an example, what's 1,000 acres? What would be included in that statement, what is not included in that in the proposed rules so far? So if we could just kind of start and go through the whole thing. I don't think we have enough time to go in great depth, but maybe just to see if there's anything we need to clarify or would like clarified. Because the problem with being on the planning commission is we usually don't see things until everybody sees them. So we don't have much time to think about them before we're at a public meeting. When you're in the public meeting, you sometimes can't get to everything that's running through your head. So maybe we can just pick up a couple of other topics that we want to consider. But we've gone too far. And then before we end, I'd just like to, you know, let people know where some other communities are. Is there other meetings that people can attend for information about this in the region? I know about a couple.
And the Planning Commission has received an invite from Johnson County. I think that's been forwarded on, and I'm not sure.
Yes, that's on September 24th, where it actually reached out to have community, other communities. So that's Johnson County Planning Commission. I know that that invitation also went to the Edgerton Planning Commission. So probably Gardner got the invitation, and then the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. The Johnson County Planning Commission is having a presentation by their outside consultants at their meeting on 5:45 on June 14th, which is two weeks prior to the one that we've all been invited to. So anybody can log in and listen to that, just like Gardner. Gardner is currently, not Gardner, Edgerton is following what they're all doing, both Johnson County and Douglas County. And they are, they had sent their mayor and several other people, city staff, out to salvage, tour a large solar facility. And they are currently working on a presentation for their city commission. They don't do it by Zoom, unfortunately, but I have one individual that works in Edgerton that's going to send a packet that they have, so I'll make sure everybody gets that. Because I think now it's turned into a more region-wide consideration on what we do from Johnson County and Douglas County.
And I do believe that other counties are watching Johnson County and Douglas County to see kind of what direction we are taking. There was a comment in the last Planning Commission meeting that discussed Sedgwick County's regulations and said that Sedgwick County doesn't have all the restrictions that Douglas County and Johnson County are proposing, and that they had a lot of concerns. And so we actually reached out to Sedgwick County. And Sedgwick County did explain to us that when they originally created their solar regulations, it was mostly intended for like cooperatives and maybe 10 or 20 acre solar farms. And so they said that they are currently now also getting some interest for really large-scale solar. And in return, they're looking, really evaluating their regulations as well. So I feel like they're also a little bit in the same boat as we are. Ottawa, Waterman County has reached out to us and asked us for a copy of our regulations. They currently have a moratorium that they put on in March of this year because they were also having quite a bit of companies reach out to them about large scale. So they're kind of watching and seeing where we're going. Reno County requested a copy of our solar regulations that we sent this week, our draft, because they're also in the same boat. So I think really, you know, almost statewide for counties that are zoned, a lot of us are really in the same boat. I don't think anyone's ahead of anyone or behind anyone, but everyone's watching everyone to try to collaborate the best that we can together.
That's great. I was very encouraged that the Johnson County Planning Commission was the one that actually reached out first. Because I was going to suggest that we try to work with each other and have some, you know, larger standards. I know each county is going to have little variations on the theme, but getting everybody on the same page, I think there's something that has the potential for such a drastic change in the rural areas in certain parts of the state, in support of everybody to be cooperating of major groups.
We've actually requested, we did this when we had, when we were really talking pretty in-depth about agritourism and how each county could have different agritourism regulations. So we've reached out to those counties that have reached out to us that have been asking, you know, where we are in the process. And said, we are very happy to do a roundtable discussion with as many counties as we can that are kind of in the same boat to just talk amongst each other and learn from each other and collaborate together. So hopefully that will be upcoming. Our timing is a little, you know, some of those are having even drafted regulations yet. So they have a little bit more time. We have a little bit more heat because we're going to planning commission in just four weeks.
I would point out, Johnson County won't be making any decisions this month. So I don't think we should feel compelled that we have a final version prior to the Johnson County meeting. Because our meeting is the week before the meeting we've been invited to, Johnson County.
And there, Johnson County emailed us this morning because they were wanting to set up a meeting with us. We've met with Johnson County staff, their planners, planning director, and several of their planners here at this office to go through each of our set of regulations prior to the first Planning Commission meeting, I believe that was. It's prior. And then they are actually going to do a site visit in Coopelo, Colorado, of a solar farm that's similar in size. How many acres was the Coopelo? 1,500? And it's 300 megawatts. So it's comparable in size to kind of what is being proposed kind of size-wise here in the state of Kansas. So Johnson County is on September 24th flying to Colorado, and they are going to do a site visit of that large-scale solar farm.
But that large-scale solar farm is on high desert.
Correct.
Opposed to natural.
Yes.
Same with the Tucson one, Edgerton, that's even more desert. What collateral?
Very different circumstances. I think they have a large one in Virginia, you know, if you want to look at it. I think it's quite large, the two-bays one. So it would be more similar to us with Woods.
And Dre did some research of solar farm sizes in the Midwest. Because we were really curious, like what's being, you know, what we anticipate is going to be proposed at Douglas County, how that compares to other states in the Midwest. He's going to grab it right now, provide a little bit more feedback on the other solar sizes. Just in the Midwest, kind of in Iowa, Nebraska, kind of similar soil type farm uses and where they are in size. And if they're under construction, if they're at the beginning stages of work, they say complete. And I think the largest one, Dre, will you share the largest? Thank you. He's got to end up hurting one.
This is not a complete and exhaustive list. I'm still doing this.
So it looks like there's two that are complete. One is 800 acres in size in Iowa, and another is 1,900 acres in Iowa. Ohio, I'm sorry. And there's a couple under construction or not complete, or maybe that it's sort of construction, but they've gone through some planning processes.
I think all of these are supposed to be done by 2024.
Needless to say, it's an issue all across the country. To just do a simple Google search or a Yahoo News search for solar and use arms on it, you get just a non-ending list of newspaper articles. Local communities have all the different ways that they respond and reacted to these requests. So everything's all across the board. And as Bonnie pointed out, Kansas doesn't have anything. And it looks like we're kind of at the forefront with Johnson County and trying to figure out how to gear up solar to this scale. I find it interesting that Wichita, they were talking about co-ops, which are everything else. So they haven't really considered the scale that is being proposed. So maybe, Mary, if we could just kind of go through, you know, like some definitions and then...
Sure.
And then kind of what we're working list of conditions for approval and what we would have considered in a conditional use program and see if there are things, any of the, well, Sharon or Karen, when Gary gets here, that we might think will be beneficial to look at and most possibly adding.
Okay, well, we can start out with definitions. If you want to get any questions or comments. I do have a comment. I noticed there's a lot of concern when you call it small-scale solar energy convergent systems. And what we're really trying to say is they just don't count. So perhaps that can be revised to personal or accessory systems. So it's clear that we're not talking about 10-acre systems. So I think maybe that should be relabeled and the definition changed, make it a bit more clearer.
Or people that purchase solar panels or contract, they have them put on their property.
Right.
For individual use.
Yeah, an individual business that's a lot front-end to the building, that these don't apply to that. So I think we should change that maybe to accessory.
Although I understand that legally it's Kansas that, correct me if I'm wrong, that if a group of homeowners wanted to put together a small-scale solar facility, like a few panels that might do a couple houses, a couple, three houses. I'm going to say that's not, they're not able to do that? Or is it limited, is solar, our solar facilities limited to personal households when they're...
They're not limited to personal households, the way we look at it. Because, you know, you can use it for your house. So the question is, could four houses do it, or could 100 houses do it? So I guess it depends on where we draw the line, like to say, you could still be under this accessory or personal. The whole community can do it. They say, well, we're just a lot of houses. But I know what you're saying, individual residences want to be a little, they're under a co-op.
So which of Johnson County has is co-ops? Which I think we've already seen.
And Free State Electric has reached out to us. So there are cooperative in the county that provide electricity to a portion of the county. They are interested in, I think they've already maybe have grabbed and identified that they would like to put it. I don't remember the number of acres, but 10 acres or fairly small scale, just kind of solar panels up. And then we just asked for them to hold up on the application to these. And so would those come under that?
I think that would, that's the question.
So if, I don't know if we need to identify, you know, concerning personal homes that is directly being provided G energy relief back to that home, then obviously that's just residential use versus if you're in a third-party and have a third-party utility company. And then those rates are not reflecting back, you know, to a personal property. I'm not sure how we would identify.
Well, could that be the distinction right there? Whereas any, any solar facility that's feeding right back into the homes is one category. The other category is going through a third-party provider. And is it providing electricity for the grid?
Yeah, and I wonder.
And that would be in a utility scale.
So I'd like to clarify that, because in the commercial scale, we do have in bolt sets that convert solar energy into electricity with primary purpose of storage and wholesale sales. And so if you're doing it just for homes, then it's not storage.
Mary, can I interject?
Sure.
So we have solar panels on our barn, and nearly all solar, home solar installations are tied to the grid. So generally, you size it so that it's less than what you would use with the idea that, for the most part, you're using what you create. But, but any other, that there's always the agreement, you're selling to a third party. You have to unless you have a storage, an onsite storage. So if I'm hearing right, if that was part of the definition, I don't think that would work.
I think the net metering is what you're talking about, something like net metering, where you sell unused back to the energy provider. So net metering would be under the accessory and personal, but wholesale sales. So if you're doing wholesale sales, and I think maybe you can clarify what that means more.
So I think Karen is right in the sense that they're not able at this point to have like a co-op thing that just goes to the home, had to be tied into the grid. I think that's not allowed in Kansas, as I understand it. However, I'm thinking down the line, I mean, when S battery technology comes online and instead of having to revisit this, you know, could be only five or 10 years from now. If there's battery storage, and people could be self-sufficient on a battery and solar panels, like a cooperative could potentially be. And maybe that's too far down the line to think about.
So we did identify in the windbreaks something similar. So we said maximum capacity to produce up to 50 kilowatts of electrical power for consumption onsite and not for transfer or sale to a third party would be considered a small system.
Yeah, but that would put the consumption onsite, and I think we're talking about having it somewhere, and then it goes these houses. So it may not even be outside. It could be on a property they're leasing, or it could be on one of their properties.
So maybe we limit the capacity like they are, they're saying 50 kilowatts.
I don't know what that would be.
Are there scenarios where someone with a small local instance generating power consumes directly from that setup in a way that's disconnected from the grid or doesn't have some connection to the grid where overuse, for example, flows there as opposed to a battery?
Gary, I think nearly every small installation is tied to the grid. So it feeds under the grid what is excess and uses what can be used there. But it's, it's pretty rare for people to have battery storage because it's complicated and, and it's hard to balance what you need versus what you create.
Right. If that's the case, I kind of suspected that, Karen, if that's the case, I wonder what the utility of the, of the 50, what would the kilowatt, the cap that defines small use is? Is that, is there a different way to describe it other than its output?
What if the sale to a third party be the trigger to that? So if you're actually selling back directly to the utility company, say Evergy or Free State, then that would be exempt. It would be if someone has a power purchase agreement, like a company called Nextera or a company called Orion, then that, then Evergy or Nextera are then purchasing power from that third party coming from your home. Then at that point, that meets those commercial standards. Isn't that what the point of the third-party language is? Does anyone know?
I'm not sure it's always going to be the case that it is a third party other than your actual utility provider. It could very possibly be that Evergy sets up a system and buys for the grid too. And that would get around those rules. So I, I think that's a little nebulous.
If every small, if every solar setup is connected to the grid, isn't there some implied or direct agreement that power generated in excess of what's consumed will be consumed by the grid and compensated for?
Yeah.
It's not automatic?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I stepped on you. Mary, would you say again, please?
Yeah, that's net metering. That's a common term for it. So if you produce more than you need, they buy it from you. That way they get the benefit of that energy that you've created, and you get compensated. It sounds like we're trying to look at something in between accessory and personal, for instance, the panels that Karen has on her barn, and commercial scale. And I think we are looking at something in the middle that might be truly small scale, which may have to comply with certain, I think you'd still get a CUP. But maybe the standards could be reduced. We could have a small scale and have a CUP and just note the standards they have to comply with. And we still, and we'd have to define what is small scale, whether it's by number of panels, acres, or major diversity.
I just don't want to get to the point where down the line we tap that. Something as you described is there's a disincentive for it. There's too many barriers for it. There are standards and regulations that are just meant for big, huge utilities that really don't apply to these smaller-scale operations.
That's a great idea.
We still want to get it, but...
For small scale, we should define it. And maybe, I think some of the standards in here could apply, you know, reclamation plans. And that's just, we could know which standards, or maybe know that they apply, but maybe in lesser degree. That may be, we do have flexibility.
Mary, what if we're using size alone? What if we use the Baldwin City installation as an example? Because it's five acres, not just five acres under the solar panel. What if we use the Baldwin City installation as an example, because it's five acres, not just five acres under the solar panels, but the whole facility right there, and it creates one megawatt? And that, to me, is something that if in the future a, a co-op or something wanted to put together something like that, I think it could maybe not fall under the full force of the rules we're talking about. But that gets you far beyond like the 7.2 kilowatts that we would have on our barn.
And the Butler County solar farm that we visited was also one megawatt. So that does kind of keep in line with.
I like that we've been seeing, where we're creating tiers, like you have one that's exempt, and one that has less restrictions, and then there's a larger requirement applied.
So two things, when we're talking about megawatt or kilowatt, what period of time are we speaking about for that generation? Is that over a year, or over a month, or just the rating of the solar panels? And what duration is that?
I assume that just means that's how much it could produce. If it just produced, that's why they would produce. When it's producing.
On demand, at all time.
Yeah.
At all time.
But we can certainly go to check that.
Alan, it is this conversion for kilowatts per hour, like ones per hour.
That is some kind of standard, my standard for it. But I think, yeah, maybe size, like a private team that could, for small scale, but not a lot.
And Karen said Baldwin City, that's five acres? Is that what you said, Karen, five?
So.
Five acres seems small.
As we work on these definitions to tease out categories, should the amount of the land use, total required land use, I think should fall into that too. But if you're doing it in your backyard, put out 20 solar panels in the backyard, are we talking about a conditional use permit or something that extends beyond that? Before we kick into testing the soils for heavy metals, everything else we are talking about for the large conversions?
Most of the time when we look at size, we're looking at the area under the solar panels.
Right.
Because so many people have eight acres, and they put something on it, we would just look at the area that's higher, sort of packed on.
So could we maybe consider what size area would trigger a higher standard review regulation, as well as the generation capacity? I mean, these would be factors that work together.
It can be in or, or, or.
Yeah. And, and others, we come up with others that, that would trigger a higher standard of review and planning.
I do think we want to stick with the area that's actually under the solar panels.
So we can literally see how much is actually under Baldwin City solar panels. That's why we're kind of.
Well, as a working, working, a working document, if we could look at all of those things, and then we can tease out final recommendations from that. And, you know, if that works, this doesn't work. I think right now we're at the stage, let's try and not include things until we know that they don't make sense.
For sure, I think one of the goals should be not to make it any more difficult than it already is for small-scale solar, for personal solar, because there's so many hoops to jump through as it is. I don't want to see us adding to any of those, because that's what we really need, is that dispersed generation.
That's my thought also. We've got to figure out, you know, how much generation power for personal use. We not want to get in a way of, because, you know, I would like to see not anybody wants to put on their rooftop or put up a couple of panels on their land for their own use, and then net meter it, I think that's, that's a great goal.
We have exemption.
Yes.
So if it's on your roof, it just doesn't, it's just a building permit. So if it's your own personal camp, you have a beach house, you put it along, it still just goes to. Yeah, well, that small scale, change the other one to accessory or personal. Yeah, and I, as somebody who has solar panels on their house, I mean, it was, it's just a building permit, but it's not a barrier. Kind of like putting an air conditioner, basically, it's kind of the same thing. Okay, so then permeable fencing.
Or even for the neighborhood, I like that, that vacant land in your neighborhood. And people, that would be a co-op, so.
Actually, I'm thinking about that too.
A group of households to pool their resources to put up panels on a vacant area around that.
And I don't know if there's anything building code-wise that would not allow that. I don't, we have to consult with.
Well, that would be mostly city, so we're only talking about county right now.
Well, just consider development or something, that they wanted to put up their own little solar farm around their city.
Or I was thinking, when new development, when new lands annex into the city, and we've got new subdivisions going in, you know, subdivision in the future, maybe saves a few lots for solar. That new something.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we should end up at the end of this with recommendations on how to modify the city. But we're only talking about conditional use permits right now.
That's what Minnesota did, the thing I sent, is they, they took all levels and no standards for every kind of solar installation. Because they're, they're more concerned with the bigger city, you're concerned more with, they get into the fact that, I mean, locking somebody's son from their solar panels, you know, the two-story building goes up next to my house and blocks my solar panels. So they were getting into that. That's beyond what we're doing right now.
Solar.
Yes. Okay, so we will revise those definitions and then either create special conditions, or just note which standards, or note their flexibility for small scale, something to say.
Now, let's just start with, there's considerations and different categories possible. Tease out the ramifications of that before we have a final rule.
What's your, yeah. What would you like to discuss next?
Well, before you move on, it was difficult to hear some of that last conversation, and I have a question. To Karen's point about the, about making this as easy as we can, at least certainly not making it more difficult. Do I understand that we're saying that a CUP would be required in every single case, no matter what?
No, not for accessory or personal. So if it's on your house, but if a group of 10 homeowners got together and they put up a small solar facility, that would probably require a CUP, but with different standards. So it would be simple. I think that's where we're, kind of the direction we're heading in. I don't think we really.
Very good, thank you for that.
I think we landed anywhere, yeah, but that's.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you for that.
I know there were questions about the, we're just looking down the page here, there were questions about the permeable fencing. I didn't have time myself to look into that. There were questions about what is permeable fencing and how much fencing needs to be moved.
Yeah, and I know somebody did ask that, like, do we need the security that, could we just do barbed wire, like we do around a quarry or something, or a farm? And so that's something I think we have to research, and it'll be the solar facilities that will tell us. Is there some reason, are they worried people will kind of vandalize their equipment or steal it?
Mary, so I think I can shed a little light on this. And so when I met up with the Evergy folks at the Baldwin City installation, and I asked specifically about, you know, is, is there a vandalism issue, and so on and so forth? So there's a little bit of, of safety issue that if you get into the inverters, there's some, you know, DC current, which could cause some harm. But that, but certainly no worse than a quarry, which we just put a barbed wire fence around that and put a sign and say, don't go in there. But their main concern was that they don't want deer in there. And I find that to be a significant sticking point, because we're talking about a lot of acres that we would be, if we were to be fencing deer out of it, which means wildlife would be, you know, channeled in corridors outside of that, and would really disrupt the ecosystems out here with that many acres. So in my opinion, I think we need to talk with these energy companies, but I think they need to find a way to design deer-friendly installations so that we can have permeable fencing that, that allows the movement of wildlife.
I have to say though, that the most fencing that we're familiar with is deer-perviable. I mean, unless you're going to put up a chain-linked eight-foot fence, just about everything, deer can jump over.
And that's what they want. They want a six-foot chain-linked fence with a single barbed wire on the top, specifically to keep out deer.
Is that going to stop deer, or do we, does it have to go all the way up to the scale as to what's around the airport? With the out, you know, the piece at the top that leans out?
I think we were recommending on fences, we wanted them to be high enough that we weren't going to have deers impaling themselves on the top of the fence.
Right.
So we were looking at seven feet, and the reason we chose that height and not the barbed wire, the seven feet, is, you know, that should discourage deer, I think, from jumping over on what we've got.
Well, what damage is it that the energy company is expecting from deer?
Well, you know, when we asked about grazing, they said they can graze sheep, but they don't like grazing goats. The goats might get on the panels and run on them, and chew on different things, and maybe it's the deer. Deer will chew on trees, so maybe they'll chew on their wires. I don't know, I haven't even heard about, comment that.
The issue, the issue that they gave when I asked was about deer with antlers specifically. And I think for, for maybe pulling loose wires that are secured under the bottoms of the panels, and those, in my opinion, could possibly be put in conduit, and then they wouldn't be, wouldn't be an issue. The other thing with the deer and the fencing is you might keep most of the deer out, but sooner or later a deer gets in there and panics, and is going to do a lot more damage for it being trapped in there than it would otherwise. So I, I just think you're better off to design for the deer and put up with them.
Okay, we definitely need to look into that, and. There are recommendations that K-State has for deer fencing that I might look into, and it actually has to do with depth perception and deer. So it's actually staggered wires, in this case, for gardens and stuff, it's for like electric fencing, which we probably would want, but there are recommendations from K-State extension for deer fencing. Would they be Douglas County, or is it, yeah, I can get it to you. Okay, great.
I think the issue for me is not how do we keep the deer out, but that we shouldn't be keeping the deer out.
Well, this isn't perfect, so it would allow maybe some deer fencing around some of the critical, more critical pieces, possibly as opposed to the whole thing, which might be, you know, who put it around us. I don't know what particularly the companies would be concerned with, if it's every single panel, if it's only, you know, certain portions of the complex. But yeah, I think that the idea of putting that, what, critical wires and conduits is a better option than trying to keep the deer out. But if there are certain places that need to keep the deer out, then there's this fencing that's not 100%, but you know.
And Karen, just an FYI, when we originally wrote the regulations, we had that we wanted wildlife corridor available at quarter-mile intervals. And then that got scratched by the feedback from the solar companies. And I think right now we're saying, just show us on your site plan how you're going to provide wildlife corridors. Because some areas may be open because of floodplain or trees, or, or something like that, so. But they definitely did not like the, allowing the quarter-mile intervals of wildlife corridor through there.
They wanted no corridors, is that correct?
No, they were okay with corridors, they just thought, because we were saying typically quarter-mile, just to give us some guidance. Because in these standards, you can tailor them to fit every situation. So we kind of wanted it to be clear, we were looking at about quarter-mile was reasonable. And they asked us to take that out and just look at every case, case by case, because maybe you're in a location that you don't need it every quarter mile.
I think that makes sense, especially when you're dealing with natural features that are natural corridors for wildlife. And to prescribe it, and every quarter mile does take advantage of the landscape that's there.
That is true.
I do think maybe when that site plan comes in, we should add something in the regulations to allow us to have it reviewed by someone who specializes in that.
But we did, yeah, we sent just staff. We sent it to the biological survey, we sent it to anybody that would have knowledge. We would try to say, yeah, this is a good walk-by course, because we wouldn't have any idea. We would definitely find the experts.
We're talking about two different purposes for fencing. I mean, one is safety for people, which would also be safety for deer. You know, keep them away from inverters, substations, any place that could cause electrocution. And then there's the security issue that's going to be raised by companies, where they think they have to have fencing. Because we got safety and then we have security, so.
And damage just in general, so if deer, you know, were to damage the panels, and the panels were to crack, then, you know, at that point, we're dealing with maybe possible contamination issues, so that's kind of another whole, another concept that.
And where they're isolated, some of these might be, you know, we'd like them to be isolated, so they are isolated, it would be a very attractive place to go. And if it's not fenced well, so I think we need to check that, to see why you'd fence that.
Yeah, because fences are used, you know, for multiple reasons. Prevent damage, security from vandalism, and then safety, so. What's needed where? Because, you know, we're, we're focusing mostly on the panels, but we also have the inverters, at least at Edros. We've got a substation to set it up to the transmission wires. We've got other wires that they may be running above ground, I, you know.
And the battery storage.
And battery.
And it'll definitely fence that way more securely. We don't need to, because that would be a small area.
And each one of those have separate land requirements and regulations from a lot of different layers of government about how much space has to be there, exactly what fencing and.
Yeah, the battery, those standards I mentioned, they actually talk about the type of fencing you have to have, and separation of everything. So that's, I don't know that they have the standards for solar systems in general, we'll get to look on the C's or something.
Because we have the, the Evergy substation issues still pending in front of the planning commission also, and they're talking, they only want to put two transformers in this huge area. And when I asked the question, does that allow me to put more in it? It says, no, the new regulations require this larger area for the transformers. So we've got, and how much of this is, well, now I'm jumping ahead, so a thousand acres.
We'll get that.
Yes, yeah, but just keep all that in mind, and what's included in calculating the area that's permitted? Because it's not just a thousand acres of solar panels, there's a lot of other uses that have to have space.
Well, another issue with fencing on that, since we're getting a lot of people who are, a lot of people comment about the aesthetics of a solar field, if you're going to put up an eight-foot chain-linked fence, that's a little more daunting aspect than the solar panels.
And for this ROR, I mean, effectively, people in rural communities are very used to barbed wire fencing. But once you get chain going, it definitely changes.
It's a little different for you.
Yeah.
Maybe other than the conditions required for approval, is there anything that anybody thinks we need to add additional? Large topics?
Yeah, Jim, if you're, if you're asking for large topics, I have one that hasn't been mentioned yet. Is this the time?
Yes.
Okay, so just general neighborhood impacts, I think is something that we need to flag. We have a habit or a tradition of making sure that developers or applicants have met with the neighborhood in, you know, individually or in groups to, to kind of talk over what the project will be. And that's not the method typically, I think, for these energy companies. Rather, they talk to the people whose land they hope to lease, but there, there's a gag order kind of on being able to, to have people talk to their neighbors about it. So there's no way to negotiate a neighborhood deal or something that works for the neighborhood. So then you have just fragmented haves and have-nots, distrust amongst neighbors. I, I find this to be a significant issue, and I think it's something that can be worked around. I'm not sure, you know, as we as a land use body, how exactly we get at that, but I think maybe requiring that there be a, a neighborhood coordinator But I think um maybe requiring that there be a, you know, a, a neighborhood coordinator or a. Some, some method of unifying the neighborhood around this and not just dividing one person from another.
Well, we could certainly require that the applicants have neighborhood meetings, like host an open house. Um I don't know, you know, then they could give them factual information, that way it's not all just rumor driven, which is super helpful. Um and I know that Pam Corey has been doing that, they've hosted some meetings um in Udora. Um just to kind of kick off some open houses, so I think that's a great idea. I don't know if that's something we could incorporate, and I don't know that that will address everything that you're talking about, Karen. But it would certainly be a first step or at, at least a small step towards it.
Yeah, and on page thirty-two of our documents, as it be, under supplemental information. The first one, we want them to give us information regarding the public outreach, such as how do they inform their property owners? What meetings were held and what information was provided, so perhaps we should clarify early on before they get to this point. So that's something we expect, we expect neighborhood. Area, area input perhaps.
Is there language already in something existing for that, or is this, is this being new language?
This is existing on under.
Page thirteen.
No, no, I meant for um. In, in some other capacity, not for this, but is this a language for. We require the whole community meetings to exist anywhere else.
Well, the question. Only in, I think we used to have it for planned developments in the city, but the thing is you can hold a public meeting and no one can come through. But for that, then at least you've done what you can, so. And I don't know the condition required for approval would be, you know, you must hold a public hearing, I think. I think that's someplace else. So that starts me, that, that's opening the door to requiring a whole plan. Especially large scale.
I think it's been a fairly powerful tool that we, as the planning commission, have used to, to send them back if we felt like they haven't done enough community outreach. And I think staff just tends to, you know, tell them that that's an expectation on our part. So we can write something in the regulations if, if you, if we need to, but I think um making sure that, that that is something that. We and future planning commissioners um insist on seeing a, and that. I, I just, I think that they will need to be pushed though, because I think their, their particular pattern is to um talk with individual landowners. And then not allow those individual landowners to talk to their neighbors about what deal they're getting or who's being approached. And that, we need to work around that.
I think maybe, I don't know what they're talking about, if they're talking about leases, they don't want other people to know what, what costs they're going for the lease. Or if we're telling them, don't talk to anybody, but. We do have in here where they have to send out a notice before they submit the application for anyone within one mile. And that would probably be a good place for us to just call, we'll call it additional public notice. But we could call it additional public notice and public outreach.
Which page is that on there?
Thirty, that's the very bottom.
Mary, I think you're, hmm, you know, possibly adding. An idea that covers all the general neighborhood impacts as like number twelve under the conditions. Or number fourteen of the conditions area. Or put it, put it in that list that says. Here's a category we're going to look at. It doesn't, and then it's defined later on, you know, we don't, this is just things that we're gonna look at. They're not, none of those by themselves determine the final outcome, but.
Yeah, I like that, we can add that into the language on page thirty, um letting them know. But then also having it be a condition that's considered by the board, so it could be, you know, public outreach.
Because as Karen pointed out, we, when we struggle sometimes, that's a great way to go when you've got a lot of people showing up saying, well, we didn't know about this. And you find out, oh, we. Get our strict notice for this little area, but. And other people are all upset, it's better to say, hey, we had a general meeting, or go back and talk. So we've deferred often, well, I don't know if it's often, but. Numerous times we've deferred to go back and talk to the neighbors or the neighborhood organizations. And then come back, see if you can work.
Yeah, and sometimes we advise them to do that and they, they don't. So yeah, maybe we can add A, under these conditions, A, about being able to conform to all standards. B, a public outreach program or whatever. And I don't want to call it public outreach or public communications. The applicant should demonstrate their public outreach, that, that they have tried to communicate with neighbors. And then key issues to be considered when reviewing the application. But I think when they're reviewing the application, you look at it, but I certainly think it can be under this condition.
So, that's great, and it could just be their public outreach efforts. And then they can provide that.
That makes sense, okay.
And then a reviewing body can say, we don't think it was enough work.
But you'd be right there in the application, if you could see, here's what they did.
So I met with um Sue and Stephen Enright with Enright Gardens. Sue came and spoke at our last planning commission meeting, so I drove out and, and talked to them about their concerns. And one of the things that they flagged, which is also kind of echoes when our neighborhood was approached by Nextera for a wind development. Is the, the people who may be living next to a solar installation and, and impacted by it. But not, but they don't have, you know, they opt, opted out or they weren't approached because they had too small of an acreage. What kind of compensation is there for that? Uh which my, my guess is unless we intervene, nothing, and is that something that we can or should intervene with? Because I think that's the sort of thing that will have neighborhood impacts that will last a long time.
I think if we reviewed a CUP and we determined that it has significant impacts on a neighbor, I don't think we would recommend approval of it. And at that point, I think whoever is submitting a CUP would probably contact the neighbor directly and see if they could compensate them or make them more amenable to it. But I don't think we would ever approve a CUP and say it's gonna have really bad impacts on the neighbor.
That, that might be something that the neighbor disagrees with.
But, but I don't see how we, the, the county can get into compensating. That doesn't sound like a legal avenue that we could have.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it'd be really good, because then every neighbor would be.
Right.
Would open the door and say, I need to be compensated for this, that and the other thing.
Right.
And then even five dollars in the fees or anything.
And the only way around that is for those companies to purchase the land and own the land.
Yeah.
That's the only way around that. And no one released, they buy everyone out.
I think our attention.
Which would fix a lot of our issues.
Well, I, I guess, you know, just to build on what Karen brought up. That when a neighborhood doesn't sign a lease or already engaged in some activity that says, no, we don't wanna give up our vineyard for solar. When a CUP comes in and, like we say, we, we wanna do a thousand acres. That's a lot of parcels in the thousand acres. And we're talking about LISA, looking at parcels for CUPs. Are we gonna end up in a situation and say, you've got one big CUP for a large area for this use? That says has forty, fifty parcels. We're gonna do LISA for each parcel? Or each parcel's impact on a neighbor and can we just say, hey, it works for here, but not for this parcel?
I think that's how, yeah, I think we can do a LISA of every parcel.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying packets, there's gonna be, you know, five hundred pages thick going through.
And just, I mean, the amount of resources and time that will take for stuff to run those tools, it's.
Right.
Very time intensive.
Maybe that be your.
We definitely should have AP for our commercial tools.
Because that is said, if, if I understand the LISA, it's gonna be by parcel.
Yes.
And we're talking about applying it to CUPs, scale site lands, so.
Correct, that are land intensive, so.
That are land intensive, and this, this type of large scale solar is certainly land intensive.
But when we get it automated, some of this should be able to just run, like agricultural information should just run it. All we have to do is say, what's the current land use, are there any constraints, and is it in use yet?
And do we have the mechanism to drop parcels at this CUP, so you know, this one can't work?
You do.
Once it, that would be our recommendation.
We would provide recommendation based on.
Would be without parcels, X, Y, and Z, whatever. Okay.
I think that one answer to your question.
What's A?
I could potentially run some local parcels at once. The only issue is that it's capped at the amount of parcels I can move and it will uh run the numbers as one.
Right, like I did for the corners, you can do it all together.
Right.
But. That's not really useful, I think what you're saying pointed out, this area might be awesome, this area is not so good, so the regional number. I think we'd have to, like, partial like parcel.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm afraid of, I like for regional numbers, we, this.
Absolutely.
Some incredible. Things that we wanna protect.
Like native prairie?
Like native prairie, you know, rare plants, because I know the map's out there.
And that's why Kansas Biological Center, they always use their CUPs to let us know if there's any rare plants around or any prairie, visit prairies or. So yeah, I don't mean limited regionally, but I don't think it'll be that time consuming, once we get a LISA adopted. And then our GIS people can put it in, where we can just run the agricultural numbers really quickly.
Right.
I don't think they can do some of those other things, I don't think, do the land use, some of that you just have to issue yourself.
Now, some of that's gonna come from other maps, that's gonna have to be.
Yeah, so the agricultural, the ones on the agricultural map, we've been before, those can be that stupid. Then as far as the other things.
I think Karen's point is really interesting, because we already know, because we've had, um, you know, just some one-on-one meetings with solar, some of the potential solar companies. And they've already said that they are not even leasing or approaching landowners that are on smaller lots with houses. Because there's no benefit to them financially to put, you know, what they want to install on such a small parcel. So they are going to be the neighbors who are non-participating because they don't have a choice to participate. Because they're too small and they have a house out there. And then, um, you know, they're also gonna be the ones that I would assume would have the biggest um voice of impact. Because it's gonna be around them, so I, I would really like to brainstorm. You know, anything that you guys can think of that would help those property owners out. Because right now, there's nothing in the regulations that will help them, and they don't even have a choice to sign up on with a lease.
And every one of them is gonna call Tanya.
Yes. We are already getting calls.
Yeah, I started sectioning the standards, so is this another additional standard that we can try to work out about impact on? What we've been describing, existing agricultural businesses.
All we have right now is setback.
Individual homeowners on small lots, but they're.
All we have right now is, is to work with is setback, and how things setback. Right, because things you look at are visual impact, for instance, if you're on a hill and the solar panel is just right below you, setback and that could probably help. So the things you look at is visual impact, it's half of wildlife habitat. Cultural features, wildlife habitat, environmental, it's a land, water quality, infrastructure, airport, cumulative impact. How many experience, that's not really the path.
I mean, this is a CUP and, and it's case by case. I mean, if there is a situation where the topography of the land is such that the non-participating parcel of property isn't down. You could extend the setbacks in that case, as opposed to having it just set at a hundred people, whatever it was. Uh you could always modify it around that property.
Where that property owner, you know, came in and discussed it with us, we had something like that once where that the land tenant was put very close to their property owner. So he did walk with you, even though it was far away, so I think there's a lot of leeway.
I think the problem with houses on hills though, is that you can install all the trees you want, if you're on a hill, the trees aren't gonna help for a long, long time. Because it really takes a long time for them to get tall enough and you're above things. Um so I don't really know that there would be a solution for those that have, have inner use um to really help a lot. I don't think firms or trees will help.
But it will for a certain segment, so now we're really talking about a very small.
Yeah.
Portion of the count.
Was, was glare mentioned on that list of, of things to consider? Because I think the glare or potential glare is more of an issue than just visual of seeing the solar panels.
And we require glare mitigation plans, they have to show us how they're gonna, you know, mitigate glare, how, make sure they don't have glare, there's a plan they have to provide and. The firms have told us to actually try hard not to get any glare, because they wanna absorb all the sunlight we can, there's still that glare mitigation measures. You know what that is, Tom?
That's really common.
Page twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Let it be. So I think, um, I don't know if we would wanna add, because, I mean, they're gonna provide a glare study to us, you know. Saying that they're gonna limit or reduce glare in any way that they can, but if we have specific landowners that could be affected by glare, I don't. I, I don't know how we would address them individually, unless we just ask them. You know, for specific information at specific sites, if there's neighbors that have that concern.
I think we've been thinking of these, or I've been thinking of these as static installations. But my guess is at this scale, probably at least some of them will be uh tracking systems where they will actually move with the sun. Do we know anything about that, and, and are we kind of considering both in our minds as we write these?
I think we're assuming they're gonna be tracking. I think all the ones we've seen, now you said Gardner, was, or uh Walden City was not tracking, right?
That's right.
I think the ones we've seen have it.
We're on page three.
Yeah, I know, I'm just thinking, you know, a lot of these.
I mean, we have all the, um, in the CUP itself, you have those things you look at. And one of the things you look at is the impact on the neighborhood, the impact on neighbors, so that's where a lot of that's coming from, like visual impact, all that. It's in those standard CUP review criteria.
And a lot of these things we're gonna look at and comment on, I don't know what we're gonna do today with them. I'm, I'm just mostly looking at things we should can put into here to look at that aren't here yet. So maybe not figure out the exact wording for ones we already have, because I think that'll come later.
Like tackling the cap?
Okay, what?
The cap.
The cap, yeah, I don't know.
Do we want to start now?
Yeah, we could, we could, you could talk to.
Yeah.
I, I have one other little topic before we talk to the, about the cap, if that's all right. Um I had, as neighbors asked about eminent domain, and I said, my, my, my thought was that a private company probably wouldn't qualify for that. And as, the more that we talked about it, but I also said I would check, but the more we talked about it. Um the other infrastructure, the other energy infrastructure, utility infrastructure, like um, you know, underground lines and above ground lines, things like that probably do fall under eminent domain. Do we know anything about that?
Is John still on?
Yeah.
Yeah, since the government has to initiate that, yeah, um. When would the government want to initiate eminent domain for a private use? I mean, it happens.
It does happen.
But uh that's the whole racetrack and, and, and the legends area in White Lake County.
Important to be someone.
Yes.
I mean, I think, this is Sarah, I think that's something we could definitely kind of take offline and research a little bit about. I do know the usage of eminent domain for private purposes is pretty limited and constricted as to what governments can do in that situation, but. I think that's something, it's a good point, Karen, and I think, like, legal staff can take a look at it and bring something back. Does that sound reasonable, John?
Yeah, I know offhand that uh like Evergy, for example, as an electric utility regulated by the Kansas Corporation Commission. Does have certain eminent domain powers that are provided by statute. I don't know um offhand if a solar energy company like Nextera or whoever would have that kind of power. My guess is just, they probably don't by statute. We can research that, Sarah, as you say, also um the contours of when a public governmental entity can exercise eminent domain for a private party. Uh I, I think it is fairly constrained, as you alluded to, but uh if there's some interest in having that uh from a legal standpoint, we can certainly dive in and get. But uh if there's some interest in having that uh from a legal standpoint, we can certainly dive in and get a better answer on that.
That isn't the full definition of eminent domain by a government body or a private company or corporation for the public good or for public benefit. Now, like it's going to increase tax revenues or, or something like that, which is what happened in White County. I mean, I, I really appreciate the research just to let us know to have. Because if things go with a large scale solar, I mean, are we running the risk that suddenly a company is going to try to exert eminent domain over non-participating property for power lines or other infrastructure?
Well, and, and I, I appreciate that and I, and I think we can get, what I, what I would say is that i- in my experience, no CUP is going to limit the power of local government to exercise its home role authority. So I'm just going to put it out there. Um, but I, I'd also say that it's extremely difficult to do and is not done very often. And so I don't know that it, I understand that the, the concern and the ether about it, but it's, um, I don't know that you can fix it here and, or, I mean, you may just have, we may need to address it outside of this particular text amendment. But, but we can get back to you on it.
Well, that would be helpful because, you know, it's not that we can put it into CUP, but it can help steer total land area. As the larger area we go to, the more infrastructure that has to be in place to service that area. So I think maybe just having some general knowledge about that can help with establishing a total acreage that we would agree for this type of use.
And since the public has already asked.
We can't limit, I'm just, but if we go, the larger we go, the more incentive there is for a company to seek that.
I just want to make sure that the public is informed about, you know, wha- what, what may or may not happen so that it's, they're not blind, blindsided. So if I've had the question and I thought I would pass it along, and so I'd like if we can do the research and then bring an answer back to our next public meeting.
I think that sounds like a good plan, Karen. Thanks.
So I do have a question that is um not a part of the regulations. We've been getting comments from people in the public. Um, and one of the questions was how are the solar farms going to prove that the sites that they're choosing are suitable for solar? And um we actually, on the county website, in our public parcel viewer, have a tool called solar suitability that was uh the, I think all of the information was done by NASA and that has been uploaded and people in the public have been using that. And they asked me, um, because they're looking at this solar suitability tool from NASA that we are posting on our county website. And in an, in the area where one of the potential solar companies plan to put solar, it is rated very low and low. And so they said, what, why in the world are, are they, why would the county even consider an application? Um, according to NASA's research and um all of the information that they've provided to people in the public about sites that, you know, or areas that would be suitable for solar, the area that they, that this particular solar company has chosen is, is not suitable. So why are we even going to consider it? So I just have a question as to, um, I don't think that's something that we would, you know, necessarily need to use as a sole tool, because I don't understand all the research behind that specific tool that we have online. Um, but uh I do think it's a question we're going to have to answer to the public.
So I have a question for you. Isn't there a, some sort of evaluation device or something? I know there was a temporary business application for it, a metering. Are they doing that so they can meter and tell if it's suitable? And I have not followed that.
That's correct. So those, so we just permitted temporary business use. Um, and we did another one in two thousand and seventeen, one for a SODA unit. And this one is for just a solar meteorological station where they'll put a small solar panel, um, panel fenced area up on a property and they will collect the solar data. Um, but Ben's pulling this up right now. The solar suitability from NASA in two thousand and nineteen is something that our public is using. And I didn't even know it was on our website. And so, um, I just, I think that's going to come up maybe over and over and over again as we get applications. So we just, um, maybe need to just have, um, have some information available to the public about this.
Yeah, and Tanya, I'd also be, we can, I mean, I, I, you know, I know like GIS really loves to put all that stuff in there just to give the public as much information as possible when they're looking at, at layers of maps. And people totally geek out with all the different layers and stuff that they have there. Uh, obviously, if that becomes a concern, I think that's something we could talk about is do we want to keep that layer on our GIS map? But, because I, I would, you know, if you all decide to, if we decide, I do think your larger notion of like, how do we know this is a suitable site? Maybe NASA twenty nineteen is not the thing. But, um, you know, we probably, we can, I think, go back and, and address that issue. Or whatever system you, I mean, if there is some sort of notion, we could swap it out for that.
Or maybe in the regs, we just need to say, you need to provide, you know, technical information to, the applicant needs to provide that these sites are suitable for solar.
I mean, we do that for quarries, don't we? Like in terms of, like, this is a good place for a quarry, right?
Yes, they have to, they really provide that technical information of what kind of layers they have there, the quality of rock and at the depth that they, you know, yes, absolutely.
I don't know that we require, they do provide it, I think, I'm looking at here is applications and things we need. So what we would want is uh, not existing conditions, well, existing conditions, something stating the suitability of the property for solar. It's basically what they're looking for.
And I know our county commissioners expressed interest in receiving the data from the temporary business use. And currently, right now, we don't have anything in place that I know of that would say we would like your data and they would have to provide it to us.
You know, what I would.
BIS layer is much like the soil survey, soil survey. Is, it's, it's aggregate data. They're looking at samples and they're putting that on a layer. But what's underneath your feet may be different. So the most accurate information is going to be one of these solar metering devices on site as opposed to some estimate. I like the idea of adding that is some, they have a progress, something showing the suitability of the property for solar.
Sarah has been saying.
Yes, Sarah, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I mean, that's not important. No.
Everything is important at this stage.
We could keep moving.
Let's not bring this up.
Oh, we jumped ahead here. There's a few more.
Yeah, but I think a lot of this is.
Conditions and standards.
Right. The existing conditions, one thing I see missing is, you know, where's the groundwater? That was raised in our last meeting on how close the water table is under some of these. I, we have to have maps. So I think we should have a consideration because especially they go dump herbicide out there for some reason. And if we say you can't, we need to know the potential impact of contamination of the groundwater.
So we do require an environmental impact study and that should address wells, groundwater table, those types of issues. I'm trying to find it.
Your application required documents, existing condition.
That really only is an issue for herbicide. And I know we started this meeting saying that there was no uh ability for counties and townships to regulate herbicide use. And I think we need to revisit that because this is a significant issue with the number of acres we're talking about is how are they going to uh manage uh brush especially uh without herbicide use? And that many acres, I, I think we could potentially have some, um, some groundwater issues. At least in this particular part of the county, because the groundwater table is high and the soils are permeable.
Yeah. Well, the Douglas County Extension Office had two thoughts on that. One is, were we required them to do agricultural uses? They thought it would be unfair for us to limit what herbicides they could use if they're trying to do agricultural uses. And then they directed me to, to county councilor to see if it's legal. And so the state has a section in their law that says, you know, they're the only ones that can regulate pesticides. But, um, county councilor said that if neighbors complain and they say, we think there's going to be drift and we want their use of regulations, if the person voluntarily agrees to it, then that can be put in as a condition. And so basically, while you can't say you have to use pesticide, you can't say, I don't feel comfortable with this application considering the issue. Which is kind of like a prod to go ahead and agree voluntarily, not use specific pesticides.
And I, I mean, I agree that the, the use that we're replacing is probably somewhere in the realm of conventional agriculture, which does have a lot of pesticide use. Um, it also creates, at least, um, with the dicamba, creates a lot of friction amongst neighbors. And they have no recourse whatsoever, um, for whatever, however much damage. And then crop insurance won't pay out if it's dicamba damage because everybody knows it's going to happen. So it's been a hugely contentious issue between neighbors, uh, between farm neighbors. Um, I mean, even if they're both in conventional agriculture. Um, the other issue, so we have drift, which would be the dicamba, the two-four D, um, things that, you know, will follow, you know, follow the valleys and, and take out especially, um, specialty crops. So, um, um, orchards, vineyards, um, food that we eat, actual food, food growers. Um, and the other issue would be the residual effects from things like tordon, which is meant to have a residual effect in the ground and that is specifically for brush control. I think that's the kind of thing we'd be looking at for this, would be my guess. Uh, we bring it up specifically because uh that was the experience that Inright Gardens had. The uh transmission line that the companies are looking to target, which runs straight through Inright Gardens, um, and also actually through my neighborhood, the same line does across the county. Um, and the, the companies, uh, it's this time was KC P and L, has to maintain, um, to keep the brush from growing up, the woody vegetation from growing up underneath those lines. So they use a lot of chemical there and they actually had their, one of their wells contaminated with tordon, which then would kill all of their specialty crops as they watered it. The only way they knew that was happening was because they grew specialty crops. If they hadn't been, then they just would have been drinking the well water and nobody would have known. But it was on their, their dime to have the well tested and I don't know if they ever had any compensation from it either. So, um, it's a big issue and I think we will have to resolve it somehow. We can't just pass and say, the state says we can't regulate it.
Right. I think you definitely want to bring it up.
Can I turn it real quick? So the determination we got from Brad, it was, it looks like it's specific to pesticides. So I don't know if there was a disconnect in the research.
Pesticides, herbicides, and pesticides. So we just find.
So like, if, if there's like a caveat that we could, you know, regulate these parts but not those parts to try to.
I can check. I specifically listed camaria and that evergreen. So you're saying that it was particular chemical that's used cannot be dictated. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, that we cannot prohibit anyone from using specific pesticides. And Brad pointed out, I mean, the city warrants tried to prohibit people using certain herbicides and pesticides. And they couldn't because of that law. So they just stopped using them on city parks. That's the most sacred rule. And so, uh, but you know, it doesn't mean that you can't mention it. And it doesn't mean that they can't say, you know, we're willing to not use those pesticides. And all it does is buy some goodwill. It goes in the conditions that they're not going to use those pesticides. We just can't put it in the stamp. It would be, you know, it's something that comes up. It can be discussed that they can voluntarily agree. The way I know.
No, I think, I think it's tricky. I think it's tricky though, because with that many acres to do the kind of brush management they would need to, to keep things from growing up in and around their solar panels. They're going to need some kind of tools and we can't just take the tools away or ask them to take tools away without having some idea of how they can move forward with it. So I, I mean, and I'm not, you know, I'm not certified organic where I am. I, I do the best I can, but it's not a hundred percent. And so I, I, I don't, I, I don't think we should take those tools away entirely either. But that large scale issue does, does concern me.
But we, we do have some, we, what, what, um, happens when that property is put on a no drift? You know, when they signed up in the county to be a no drift? What are, what are the rules and rights behind that? When somebody is on the.
Is it just signs, they put up signage saying we're no drift to notify neighbors? Or is there actual prohibitions on what neighbors could do?
I don't think there's prohibitions.
I don't think it has any impact on neighbors. I think it's only, um, counties and townships that are willing to not spray where it says they have a no spray signage. But it's, and it doesn't always work even at that, but I don't think it has any impact on neighbors whatsoever.
Because if they, if they see it, they're, they're part of.
Yeah. Well, you know, I would argue that as Karen mentioned, conventional agriculture, I mean, if that's what's happening on the ground now, has the same, if not more, issues with herbicides than a solar facility would have. Um, and there are solar facility controlled for brush and invasive species. Um, there are other chemicals that are much, that are actually more frequently recommended, that kind of thing than that. Two-four B is recommended for a lot of brush control. Um, but there are other chemicals that don't, do not travel. Um, and a very common one that's used for any of that is phytocidal, which we all know, and that does not travel. Um, so, but we can't dictate which chemicals they use. I mean, I think we, we can't say they can't use any herbicides because then we're going to have an invasive species problem and a brush problem. Uh, in these areas, but then.
But we can have a recommended list. We can have a recommended list of herbicides.
And that's easy, that's easy enough to come by. It's a recommended list of chemicals that, so like you say, it doesn't travel in the soil. You don't have to worry about groundwater issues with that. Um, tried to hear is another chemical that's used for brush control and it's only for broad leaf control. So it won't affect grasses, although that does travel a little bit more. But each and every one of these chemicals will have specifications uh for when is probably used. You don't spray herbicides when it's windy. I mean, now that, I mean, but just because it's recommended doesn't mean it's always followed. So. But there would be, we could put together a recommended list and maybe, I don't know what we can do with that. I mean, how you propose that.
Well, they can voluntarily, you know, like when we're talking to them, pre-application, so when we're discussing a project with them, we can like know that directly to this, we'd really like to see you use it. And they could, they're like, we have a lot of times people are coming with CUPs and they say, I want, I'm going to get into the eleven. We don't require them to get into the eleven, but they think that's a good time to end or make their neighbors happy. So conditions aren't always something we put on. They put them on themselves. So to give them their recommended list of pesticides and they agree, yeah, well, we're going to follow those. And there could be a note saying they, the applicant has agreed to use recommended list of pesticides. I think that would get around the fact that we're not giving anything because they've agreed to use them.
We could open it just a little bit more and say, uh, ask them to give us their, um, brush control plan or their, you know, um, invasive species plan. And, and then just, you know, we approve that and then they have to stick with it. I mean, it, it opens it up as opposed to, there are always new chemicals coming on the market. Um, I don't know that we can keep a current list always. Um, and there, I, I would just like to kind of put the ball in their court and say, what's, what's the plan? Um, and then we can apply that to, does that work for the land that they're asking for? Um, because the, the concerns that were raised by several of the neighbors at our last planning meeting were specifically on the Sibleyville soils that are, that over sandstone, which is direct to the water table. That was the main concern there, which might not be as much of an issue on clay soils over limestone and shale, that sort of thing.
Right. And on page thirty-four, under the landscaping plan, which we could call that a vegetation plan, we may change that name. But it does say that the sideburn will include the installation, establishment and maintenance of ground cover and reforestation. And landscaping plans shall include management methods and schedules for how vegetation will be managed on an annual basis. So, um, and we can add some other language there to make sure that we can include pesticides used.
And some, some of the rock quarries have, um, conditions that allow property owners that have a concern about their groundwater to have that pre-tested prior to construction and then tested. You know, I don't know if that was on a five-year basis or.
Yeah, it was like a, a pre-blast survey. So yeah, what, with the quarries, the quarry operator sends a letter to everybody within, I think, a half a mile and tells them, if you would like to have a pre-blast survey, here would be a pre-installation survey, then they, they. Then they, they check mainly the depth of the water. They don't actually check if there are contaminants because it's hard to say where the contaminant came from. I think they check the depth because people are worried when you're quarrying, you're going to cause a fracture or something, their water is going to disappear.
Within the landscape plan, would it be wise for us to say something about that they have to establish a ground cover before the installation of solar panels? I know there were a lot of questions and concerns about erosion and such because of, you know, all the heavy equipment putting in the panels and then trying to establish ground cover around them. But instead, just, which would mean a little bit of planning ahead, but I think they're already planning ahead, just to make sure that if it's a, say, a crop field that they're taking over, that they put that to a permanent cover before the installation of the panels.
No, I did read something about that, from you and I. I don't, that would be some, a question I would put to the company, so I'm not sure that's a very efficient way to go, I can't remember what I read.
Well, it's going to be all about timing and direction.
Very difficult to do that.
Yeah, if it's not, you know, the native grass season to put native grasses down, it's going to be really tough for them to get it established and covered. A lot of times it seems like on a lot of construction sites, they have to do some type of temporary cover like rye or something to get them to the next season to where they could put the permanent cover in. Because it's all, I think it'll be very timing related. We can have them have cover of some sort, even if that were temporary, you know, if they don't get done till fall. I'm not sure, but I'm definitely not against it, but I do think we'd have to think about it a little bit.
It would also be very, very expensive to cover a whole site in native seed and then scrape part of it up.
Yeah. I don't know how much they should be scraping up. I think maybe that's the point, is that there should be a permanent cover. And then, so the, the, the panels, or the, the structure for the panels at the Baldwin side, which I know is only one thing, were actually pushed into the ground, the, the structure was. It wasn't excavated, there's no concrete in it. And that's kind of the, the model that I'm hoping for. I did ask about if they have trouble with uplift from the panels with that. And, and they said all that was tested beforehand and that it was fine. So I, I don't want to, I really don't want to see a lot of disruption to the ground happening other than whatever equipment has to drive in there to install.
Yeah, and I think that's what people we talk to, that's how they indicate they're going to do it. Friends you talk to, it seems like installing the plants and the solar panels at the same time is a good idea because if you're in doing all the work, you're putting the panels, you're putting the seating, unless you just can't. Because of the time of year.
Because the time of year is really going to make a big difference. Because I can imagine seeing planting something temporary, a cover crop that's low, so you can get in there and do what you need and then planting. Because if you're going to plant your native seed, I mean, the first year is going to be all kinds of weeds and top stuff. So depending on the time, then you're trying to go in and put the solar panels in. I think it all depends on timing.
You can't get a drill around solar panels. So your option is before or you're hand, you're broadcasting, which doesn't work for a lot of.
They're small equipment, you can use. I mean, the thing is, is there are consulting projects that actually do this with solar facilities. I mean, they, they're hired to go ahead and plant native pollinator habitat around solar panels. So I know it can be done. Quite something we need to look into.
While we're on the topic, let's land this road. What about parking areas for employees and staging areas?
Well, they don't have many employees, from what I understand, very few employees come to the site, any kind of construction employees?
I'm talking about during construction, they're, they're going to need areas for all the people doing the construction, the park. They need a place to pile up all their parks, bring in the trucks.
So the nice part is since they don't own any of the land, they'll have to lease it. And that will, any lay down yard, contractor yard that they're using will have to have a temporary business use. So we'll be able to look at the site plan, we'll be able to look at parking, we'd be able to look at all of that stuff because they'll have to get it permanent.
So that would be part of the C P, to do it on the C P.
Maybe they could equip it in the C P process and skip the temporary business use if they have that at the time of the C P. I bet they don't though. Because I bet they don't even scout properties for lay down yards to live much further in the process. And land use is already been approved. Because that's always seemed to be super last minute and I think that's why they put it in the temporary business use section. Because most people don't know it ahead of time.
But you have a process to address the temporary uses that could have a longer term impact on the ground.
One thing that I can add.
Probably voted on by the board of county commissioners.
One thing I might add to this discussion, some conversations that I've been having lately, I've discovered a lot of people don't even want to do temporary or lay down yards because of security issues. So they're not staging or getting anything onsite until the crews are there because they don't want to leave it out overnight. So that, that may mitigate a little bit of it, but I could also see where you would need to leave some equipment or, or something there overnight. But there, there seems to be a shift in the way that people are, are working on construction sites due to some security issues and resource scarcity, that they can't replace them very quickly right now, so they're scared of loss.
I know we're coming towards the end of our time. Can I just ask Sarah, do you have any particular concerns or, or things that we should be talking about that haven't come up yet from your perspective?
Well, and I apologize, I've been in and out. So not that I, Tanya and I have spoken before this and we had some conversations with Jasmine Moore and just trying to balance these difficult needs with, you know, the work we've done from a food policy perspective. And, and I don't know, Tanya, if that was discussed when I was in or out and just some of those different things.
We didn't discuss it, but I think the food policy or the sustainability, they're going to send a memo to planning commission just kind of outlining the issues of safety.
And they are going to outline the goals of the food policy point, oh, Kim's on, so.
Oh, hi, Kim.
Her speak.
Uh, no, well, I mean, you guys were, were saying what I would say is yes, Jasmine and I will write a memo from our office, both from, you know, I think what we really want to do is try to balance like both of these priorities for our community and to emphasize that. Both from the, from the food policy standpoint and also, you know, the climate and renewable energy. You know, both of these things are important to our community. And I think we really want to help with that narrative that being, you know, being protective of our agricultural soils does not make us, you know, anti-sustainability or anti-renewable energy. And, and I don't think that we should succumb to the, to outside pressures, saying that we're not doing, doing our part when we're, we're deciding how to balance sustainability in our community. And so I think we're going to, we're going to try our best to voice, to voice that from, from our perspective and help with that dialogue.
That's much appreciated. Now, the, the one company that's speaking up right now is trying to put pressure upon everybody. By live up to your ideal of sustainability by doing what we want you to do.
And I, I appreciate the discussion here today, just that, you know, there's, there's so much to balance with, with land use, with, with water runoff, you know, all, all the things that you've been talking about. All of that is part of the sustainability equation. So to throw that out the window just for, for a solar farm is, is not well thought. So I think we have a pretty good argument.
And I think when we're going to talk about the cap, I think there's been just a lot of confusion as to if we should have a cap, if the cap is serving a point or not. But one thing that we want to do is just have a conversation about how that affects county inventory. So we know, you know, how much agricultural land we have left in the county that has vacant, that has not been built on. And if we had a thousand acre solar farm and that took up an actual two thousand acres, because our thousand acre cap right now is talking only about panel coverage, not about the trees, not about the flood plain, not about the areas that they're going around. So if we just guess that a one thousand acre solar farm will actually take up two thousand acres, it will shave one year for every thousand acre solar farm off of our total inventory. And we're right now around twenty-eight years, based on how much building we've got going on right now, how many land divisions are happening in the county, how many building permits are being pulled and how much acreage we have left. So we would be maxed out in AG one zoning, which would mean everything in the county is split to twenty acre parcels. I mean, we would not have any large parcels left in the county in twenty-eight years. For every one thousand acre solar farm that we incorporate, we shave off one year. So we want, you know, to make that information public and talk about that because that's why we are putting the cap on. Because we think that even if they can come back with more applications for another thousand, that's making the case and like standing, like just kind of making the stance, I guess you should say, that this is where we're at and we want to cap.
Yeah, and I just think, oh, go ahead, sorry, Karen. So real quick, would land division still be possible when this land is leased for solar? Because then that would, there'd be new setbacks in, in an existing project?
No, I don't think they do divide the land when it's got a C P on it and covering a whole property. They could come in and do a twenty acre agricultural subdivision survey and they could do it, but they couldn't sell it. I'm sure the lease will cover that.
Yeah, we should find out because I don't know what the lease is saying.
Under leases, you know, just some generic ones that I've found online for this type of activity. Once a landowner signs that lease, or whatever the lease period is, and generally they're, they're like at least ten years, twenty years, with an option on the part of the company to extend it for another ten, twenty, thirty years in ten year increments. The landowner doesn't say, I'm done at twenty years, because they just signed the lease that says the, the power company can extend this for another thirty after the first twenty years. So, and they aren't allowed to, the landowner can't divide land, can't do anything with that land, except let it sit for the use by the, the solar company. And the solar company can choose which parts of what they have leased, they're going to put panels on and they can put them in, take them out, but they still have that land with the lease. And the owner can't do anything unless they get some written separate agreement with the solar company. So we're locking in the parcels that are in the conditional lease permit for possibly up to forty to fifty years because of the private lease.
So this kind of, what I like to know, what is the expected lifespan of solar facility? I mean.
Well, one, one thing I've read is that maybe upwards of thirty years for the actual panels. But then if they've got it on the lease for someone who has, I mean, that space, so they remove the amount of them with the way, the next technology, the next solar cell that they, that comes out.
Right, it seems like technology might be improving to the point that in thirty years, something else could be possible. Right, and maybe with our C P, that we can put a time limit on it so that thirty years they have to come back. And we feel that better technology, you can use much less air that haven't created some of that land. And we also felt, it looks good to keep this land kind of protected and not divided. I'm sure what if you go on.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of seeing this as a massive game of go of capturing areas. And we've got more than one company that's interested in solar. And they're out there getting the landowners to sign leases. And they're competition with each other to get the largest amount of area contiguous to each other to make their operation efficient. But that doesn't preclude them from leasing other areas to prevent other companies from getting that rent. And we're going to, and we've just got this lease order going on where they can offer more per year, per acre than we can make an applicable. Just to keep it tied up so nobody else can use it.
But that'd be kind of good for often to simply divide it.
Unless it can't be used for, for farm or for, you know, other.
Well, if they're just keeping it for a while, then it could be. I mean, if we, the lease, the leasehold is still far until such a time.
Possibly, it depends on the lease.
Right, but like that's.
But we have no control over that, you know, of what the individual landowner has agreed to. So it's.
And I don't know if the leases say that you can't build a house. I mean, because obviously our office, if someone comes in to pull a building permit and they own the land and they are eligible for a building permit and it's next to panels, I don't think that we would deny that. I don't know that we would have any authority to do that, to be able to issue a building permit for it. And I've not read a lease, so I don't know what the language is in leases.
I would assume that the company would, I mean, I don't know if they'd give us the leases from the cap, but I would assume that if somebody built something here that's not in the state, certainly the type of land. Once they find out about it, which could pack the houses.
Thinking back to the, the cap, the, and what Jim just said about not competing with land. It strikes me, with the cap, I, I'd like to think about the cap in the context of the region because we started talking about all the other counties that are being used right now. And that's one of the reasons why I feel like this cap is somewhat arbitrary, we don't look at the whole landscape. It might be that a larger, like some towns, some areas are better for the larger scale solar and some aren't. And it, I don't know what that county is, which county that is. But if we look at it, we are beyond the borders of Douglas County.
So Sharon, Sharon, are you aware of the, the Nature Conservancy has a citing program or a citing tool for wind called Site Wind Right? And they've been expanding that to include issues about solar. And I think it's more wildlife implications and things like that. So, but it's that larger scale beyond Douglas County look, so be the whole state of Kansas. And I believe that those updates are going to be published in November. I don't know if we can get an, an early copy or at least, at least hear what kind of attributes that they're including in that, but I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah, that's true, they've just started doing that, so.
There we are with three minutes to go and we never got to some of the other issues that were raised. And now what, what are the actual benefits to the county? Rather, you know, what are, how do the taxes work? And all of that, so I think we'll have to talk about that at another meeting. So I, I just want to finish up and ask if, you know, Jane and Mary are telling me gaps that some of us could look at and try to get some more information. We then, we talked about several things, some of us are going to reach out and try to get information to get you. Anything else that would be very helpful to you at this point?
There is a title, add some wording that I'll send you all before you look over with the definitions and some of the changes that we suggested, so you can just. I forgot those, so. Those are all. I think the one thousand acre cap to the significant point, we really need to probably work on that. Find out the reason for one thousand.
This is a part of the discussion that hasn't come up yet, but that we spoke with the sustainability office about, you know, class one and class two soils, we felt like those were important enough that even amongst solar, even if it spreads the solar out further, that we have the inventory to create given that we may need it in thirty years or twenty years. So I think that was just a discussion that we talked about some. I don't know that we have, you know, a specific answer necessarily, but that's something that, you know, as we heavily on us and that we really, you know, think it's important to get right and have more conversation about. And that's just what we just have to do that I don't know.
But we have some of that coming from the sustainability people, correct? I mean, that's going to be part of what we get from the sustainability and something about food, food balance against solar, which is going to be incredibly helpful.
Why don't you just pack the food, start it up a little bit earlier?
I, well, it might be deferred, yeah. And we're starting a conversation, a regional conversation, and it's been initiated by Johnson County. So some of the other ideas, where in our two county area. where in our two county area might work better or how to distribute that between cities and Johnson County, Douglas County. I think we're just at the beginning of really trying to form a process that from what Tanya says, beginning, is be watched by many other areas in the state. Um, because, you know, this might end up drawing in another county soon. Now, Johnson County's got the basic sunflower emission plant, but there's, what can you do with that? I mean, it's a huge environmental cleanup problem if you put solar on.
And I do believe that as in public cap, it's already looking that there's somebody comment on that. Whether it's why that's not land that's being utilized or targeted for this.
There's a cleanup cost there. There's so much prohibited. And we've got our own farm and site and tablet. Now we're up to at least another seven, five million dollars to clean up what wasn't found in the first survey. So, you know, there are areas around that might be more suitable.
Well, that opens a whole other.
It does open a whole.
So do the rooftops of targets won't watch the school.
Yeah. And all the warehouses and everything. So.
And then one note is I had, you know, in a, in some information on due diligence standards.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt Tanya and Mary. I just, I gotta go, but I wanted to mention something. I've been in communication with Brad about the pesticide herbicide issue. And Mary, Brad thought he was answering a question solely about pesticides. And so we're going to take another look at the regulation of herbicides by the county. I'm not sure we're ready to say definitively that we can't do something. Uh, I don't have an opinion about it right now, but I did clarify with him that he thought he was addressing pesticides only. So we'll take a closer look at the herbicide question and get back to you all on that.
Okay, thanks.
I think that, that's pretty. Such on a lot of areas, maybe it's going to be narrow again. That probably will have to be more of these. Um, but we have something is in a final form, a final review and recommendations to the county commissioners. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Mary, for getting this all set up. Uh, thank people that I do. And this, this has been very helpful. So thanks. And everybody that's joined us. So.
Thanks, everyone.
I guess that's it for this, this round.
Next meeting to be determined.
Thank you, everyone.